All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone. And Mr. Clark's joining us through the Internet. Mr. Henson's had another function he had to attend, I think it's CPR training. And then Mr. Patrick had his daughter playing a ballgame. So Mr. Rogers is back off the phone. So we're ready to get started and we'll turn it over to Dr. Naughton.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, members of the board. This is my first work session. I've decided to do that. Glad to be back part-time and hope to be released full-time next week. When we're next week, keep my fingers crossed. So anyway, just a couple of things. I want to give a brief budget update before we get into the process of sharing more detailed information with Finance Committee and having our big work session with the whole board and meeting with commissioners. So in your folder, we have updated the budget development schedule so we can advertise those meetings. We usually put TB to be arranged or TBA on some of these things when we first share the budget in January. But if you look at March 31st, that is our regularly scheduled work session before the April board meeting. Well, actually, if you back up, on Monday night, this is just a committee meeting, on Monday night with Finance, we'll share additional, big picture situation with Finance. And then on March 31st, we'll have the board work session and have all the lines and talk about revenues and expenditures and what that looks like. We'll have our public hearing on April the 4th. And then we are scheduled to present to the commissioners on April the 18th. That is the Monday following spring break at their 5:30 PM meeting. So I just wanted to make you all aware of those dates. I think at this time, even though this timeline is coming pretty quickly, I think it's a little early within a few more days before we start talking about specific numbers. I will let you know that what I told you all earlier in the year between Thanksgiving and Christmas, when we first got this set budget, that it would be a tight experience. It was a wonderful budget, absolutely wonderful for our employees. Almost everyone got a pay raise or a bonus or both of some sort. But it'll be a tighter budget and we'll need to make some budget adjustments and work on some of those things. And we want to share those plans first with Finance and then the board as a whole before we go budgeting. I have shared that also in person with the county manager, just to preemptively sort of keep them, keeping them in the loop. And I have shared a little information with Brian Moorehead about what we expect our revenues to be and what expenditures could potentially be over the next couple of years. So just to keep everyone in the loop. So are there any questions about that sort of broad update? And then we'll get into the nitty-gritty starting Monday. Any questions? All right, great. So mark your calendars. I know all of you may not be able to be at all of those meetings. That's pretty normal. It's a busy time of year in spring and there's a lot going on. And administratively, we will be prepared. Taylor has been working very, very hard with the help of Bob. And we've also had a little bit of help on budgetary ideas from Deborah Frisby, who's the person we contracted with back in the end. So all right. If there are no questions there, I also wanted to, one of the things we started doing a few months ago was just direct you to our draft agenda for Monday. And that should also be in your folder, just to see if there's anything that you think that we need to add, that you can think of. We do go back, and when I say we, not me, Brooke does, looks at last year and what we did in March and maybe the month before or a month after. As we were developing this, we probably need to get another S or update in a work session so we can do that in March or April, just to bring you all up to speed on what that. We told you we'd do that, made it three times in a year, so it's about time to do that. I guess you don't even have to tell us tonight, but if you see something, let us know so we can get the agenda amended and reposted before we do.
I had a question. Who are we recognizing, Dr. Putnam? Is it spring sports or winter sports? I mean, fall sports?
That'll be winter sports.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I apologize to the tech people. I realize I didn't have my microphone on. I think I've memorized every word I said, so if you didn't pick it up, let me know. I'll help you with that later when you get it transcribed. I think the next thing is for Dr. Putnam to give a capital reserve funding update and a little update on the flood. And then we'll move to that last item before we have a closed session at the end.
All right, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to bring you up to date. I had proposed asking and asked for your approval for, to request of the commissioners $900,000 in capital reserve fund balance. If you remember, that was to be able to front money for engineering fees and services provided. Those bills were coming in pretty rapidly, and so we needed money on hand to be able to pay those bills in a timely way. The Board of Commissioners did approve the allocation of that $900,000. So those will be assigned to budget codes that we can then begin paying those bills that have arrived. And we do hope to receive reimbursement. I will tell you, it's not likely that all of that will be refunded. I know that Josh and his team, as am I, working very hard to get every penny of that back, but we'll see how that goes.
Sad thing about that is if it's like everything else, it could be up to five years before you see that money come back, or maybe longer.
Dr. Putnam, what's our current capital reserve fund balance?
The audited amount is $3,935,085. And so now that would be less than $900,000 that will be allocated for the flood budget code. So that would take you down to approximately $3 million.
Thank you.
All right, next is a flood update. We've made good progress. We were, I'm going to talk about Memorial Field and the softball fields. We were able to, the two softball fields, one is Canton Middle nearest the mill on the other end of Memorial Stadium and Pisgah Softball Field, which is across the bridge and its own little vicinity or area. We've successfully achieved no rise. We caught a break there. We were able to use Ken Ash, who I believe I'm saying that correctly. He's an engineer that used to be with NFIP. And so he's a very experienced person in matters of flooding. And so he was able to achieve that through experience and knowledge and time. From that, then we had a permit issued. So we do have a permit in hand. And so the next steps are mitigation strategies that will be needed, which delayed construction documents on bidding. We had originally hoped to have those out about two weeks prior, but they are out now. Those construction documents are out for bid. And the bid opening is March 24th. After the bids are open, they're sent to FEMA for review. And that's about a 60-day process. And so from that point on, following that period for review and rescission, following the bid opening, possibly ready to begin to schedule work late May, early June. And again, that is not a set in stone that work will begin at that moment. That's just the earliest we can begin to try and schedule it. FEMA has to review those construction documents and those bids and concur that the amount charged or bid to complete the work and that the construction documents are in compliance with all rules and regulations associated with FEMA.
Is that 60 days pretty well absolute? Or is there a possibility that 30 days later?
Yeah, it'll be just as quickly as they can review it, but they do tell us right up front, they have up to 60 days for review. So again, that's for the plain surfaces only at Memorial Field, Pisgah Softball, and Canton Middle Softball. And that works, those construction documents and design are being completed by CDC.
So the fields include, the Memorial Field is also met the no-rise and all that as well? Or was it just the softball fields that met it?
It's the plain surfaces for Memorial Field and the two softball fields.
Everything's been governed.
The distinction I'm trying to make there, because it does get convoluted at times, is there's a whole separate engineer that will complete the work for structures and utilities. This is just plain surfaces, whether it be synthetic or grass. A civil engineer has completed that work, and that is Civil Design Concepts. And so the no-rise and the permit has been achieved for, and I'm just being intentionally redundant now, for Pisgah Softball, Canton Middle Softball, and Memorial Field.
That's next.
Good news.
All right, good deal. Now I'll move to utilities and structures. The initial walkthrough on Tuesday, they'll have an initial walkthrough on Tuesday to determine the scope of work at each flooded field. And again, for utilities and structures only. Construction work documents will be prepared by Reese Nolan and Michael Rath. That is the selected engineer by this board. Uncertain on a timeline for document completion for getting these, the design work and the construction documents out for bid, but just as soon as I have that, I'll bring you back another update. But that work is in process. And so if you heard what I just said about the baseball fields and, excuse me, about Memorial Field and the softball fields, the plain surfaces there are underway. The baseball fields, the plain surfaces there will be put underway. And then also going under design and construction documents will be the utilities and any structure at all facilities.
You said you didn't know the specifics on the timeline on utilities and structures. Do you have a feeling that it'll work concurrently with or later than that of plain surfaces?
It will most definitely be later than preliminary information that we've received from the engineers walking through, doing some evaluations. Those, the utilities and structures will take far more time than did the plain surfaces. Any other questions on flooding?
Backing back up to plain surfaces, is Memorial Stadium synthetic turf a total replacement? Or are they going to try to salvage any of that?
For environmental reasons, it can't be salvaged. The environmental studies revealed that there are unacceptable levels of fossil fuels contained in the synthetic turf. And there are also unacceptable levels of fossil fuels found in the aggregate for the drainage system below. And so all of that will have to be removed.
Would it make sense to, almost in a way, whether it be us or the company that installs that, to down payment that material since material construction-wide is delayed so far out right now?
Well, for any, we've considered that, but for any payment, we might be issuing construction documents that FEMA has not yet approved, and therefore we would be out money.
Gotcha.
But good questions.
If FEMA's covering, they would be covering the cost at that time. So if the materials go up considerably, they would still be having to pay for those increased materials costs, correct?
Well, the contractors are placing a bid to do the work, and whatever price they assign, they will be the ones accounting for that cost differential. Should they escalate? I don't know if, you know, sometimes they'll submit a price and say with a 5% increase or differential. That may or may not be included in the bidder, but that is the bidder's choice. But either way, it will be the amount that the contractor bids on the project, and then it'll be a matter of FEMA approving that bid amount and that the construction documents are in compliance.
At this time, though, I'm just trying to get things in order in my head. At this time, we've achieved no rise and permitted.
Correct.
So really, the only thing that we're waiting to see is will FEMA pay for it all or not?
That's correct.
But if we've decided that we're going to go back there regardless, do we really have to wait on FEMA?
You do for the money, you know.
For the money, but not for the moving ahead?
Correct. And also, the other thing I would point out, the thing that FEMA shared, that any non-compliance, which would be going outside of their regulations at this point, not only would we not be funded moving forward this time, we would also not be funded in the future.
But what would create non-compliance?
Not submitting the bids and the design to them for review.
But we would go ahead and do that. But why couldn't we go ahead and move forward with construction? I mean, we're going to do what the professionals do. I mean, say it's the same company we used last time that's going to put down the new field. I mean, the way they put down a few new fields is the way they put down a new field. FEMA's not going to change their engineering.
Yeah, but they got to prove that bid, because if they don't approve that bid, and we go and take all that turf, we go in there and like to say, the softball field, go in there and take a grader in there and remove three feet of dirt, whatever's required, whatever, that's what they should approve. If they haven't approved it, forget it. You're getting nothing. And like Dr. Putnam said, then in the next flood stage, then they're saying, no, y'all violated the policy before, we're not going to give you any money. They're just, it's petty, but yeah, we can't start, you can't even go remove a stone of gravel out of the way right now until they have their stamp of approval on that bid process. It's just the way the government.
I think what they'll, I think what they'll do, and Trevor, you correct me, because you've worked on this, and I've watched you work on it. I've not worked on it hardly at all. But what they'll do is say, to mitigate the field, you need to do this, 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 and this. If we don't, if we do it ahead of time and don't do it that way, then they're not going to fund it. They may tell us to remove, you know, 18 inches of the dirt. And we, you know, if we do 12 or 24, if we don't guess right, then we're off. They may tell us to put some kind of chemical down. If we use the wrong one or do it, and they don't ask us to do that, then they're not funding it.
Well, I'm just trying to circle back on what Mr. Nesbit asked a few minutes ago about supply chain. You know, you go ahead and get your order in for the turf ahead of time, because the turf's going to be the turf unless they decide they want a different kind of turf than what kind of turf we've always put down. And I don't think that's their call.
We don't know who to schedule that with, because they'll be approving the bidder. So let's say, for example, AstroTurf, who's completed the work.
Are you telling me that FEMA's going to decide if we use AstroTurf or XYZ turf?
Well, we may have, we may have an option, as long as all of them, oh yeah, go ahead. As long as they all fall in line with their, what they will allocate to the project and in compliance with their regulations, sure. But not all bidders may meet their requirements. Say one's insured and one's not. Say one's certified at a certain level for the construction and one's not. They may or may not approve the work for bidders who put in on it. And additionally, they may not approve the amount they've assigned to it.
Well, I understand the amount part, but surely there, I'm, never mind, I'll just let it go. There should be a checklist that we could, there ought to be a standard by which we could look and compare, is all I'm saying. There should be some kind of standard, because FEMA has to go by a standard. They're not doing this, you know, whichever way the wind blows. They have to have standards that they go by. We ought to be able to look at them same standards, is all I'm saying. Anyway. I have no further questions, Your Honor.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I would not pretend to understand how FEMA works, and it changes daily. So that's where they're telling us. But we have, just because of supply chain issues, we have contacted some of the ones we know that will put in, especially AstroTurf, who's done the work before. Hey, be aware, we should have this project ready to push go on, you know, late May, early June. Please keep us in mind. So we'll see how it goes.
You mentioned one thing there, AstroTurf. Do they know whether they're FEMA-approved or not? They probably don't know that either, does the answer to that?
I would think that anyone who's going to spend the amount of time that it takes to put in a bid and calculate all those numbers, square footage of pellets and, or synthetic turf, they spend an abundant amount of time on that. There's real costs associated with somebody creating a bid. And so I'm pretty certain they will know whether they're a qualified bidder ahead of time or not.
Okay. Well, that's leading back to, like you say, like Bobby's question. If they know they're approved, and it is sad that we can't go ahead and buy that, but I mean, it's just like you mentioned earlier. I mean, that first offer was low, the second offer came in over 2.3, then it dropped back down to one point or something. Is that still, I mean, like we're saying, how much is FEMA going to pay for? Are they going to pay for the project whenever the time they stamp their approval on it at that cost? And that's it? Or we don't know that answer to that, do we?
Well, we gave you an update, I think, and I hope I answer your question. We gave you an update in January, and the forecast was pretty bleak. The thing that felt certain at that time was FEMA's assurances that they will fund it. Also, at that time, they had 2.6 million designated or 2.3 million designated to Memorial Field. They have since pulled that back to 1.3, less any insurance money spent, which, that's frightening. Now, we're being told that that number will climb and be 100% reimbursable once we provide them with and complete the bidding process through the construction documents. Again, I always hedge just a little bit when I'm having to speak on someone else's behalf. I can only provide you what FEMA's told us. And that does change some, and, you know, many of our residents know that better than anyone, that it does fluctuate throughout the span of this flood recovery. So it really is hoping that if we do everything we're supposed to do, they will honor what they've promised us, which is 100% restoration, funding for 100% restoration.
Right. Well, there's nobody wants it done more than me, and I promise you that, being on that end of the county. But I say that we just make sure that we're proactive and ready, dot our i's, cross our t's, and just play the game as fast as we can and move forward.
Yes, sir. And I won't take any credit for being proactive. Josh and his team have been extremely proactive, making sure construction documents were ready just as soon as they needed to be. And they were, they were sitting in majority-ready. And then the permit came out, and it delayed things. There were a few little tweaks or adjustments that needed to be made to those designs, but we weren't sitting for months. We were sitting for a week or two, ready to push those documents out. And so the real worrisome, speaking to the utility and structure side, I know Mr. Nesbit works in electrical and as many of you do, many of the electrical supplies are six months out. And so we're aware of that. And if there's something we can do to preorder or get, you know, on someone's punch list for delivery, we certainly will do that. We just have to be told exactly what are you willing to fund? How many breaker boxes? How many feet of electrical line? Is it in, what major class of conduit does it have to be in? How high does it have to be above the ground? All of that has to be established before we even know the supplies and materials that we'll need to order. And that'll all come down to the construction documents and what's required from FEMA.
Speaking about these AstroTurfs and so forth, knowing if they're there, if you think about all the floods down east in the last few years, this is not the first rodeo. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that the big players knows exactly where they stand, and they know exactly what to do. So hopefully, they're being proactive as well.
Right. And simultaneously exploring alternatives as well, looking at scenarios where the plain surface is ready, but the utilities are not. Well, is there any way you can just get the lights up? So, you know, maybe we bring in food trucks and porta-johns? And we're also exploring those options as well. What I can tell you, the idea of just restoring the lights, if they got nothing else done, it does not look good at this time, because those lights are tied into three separate feeders or panel boxes. And so, well, by then, you're completing the restoration anyway. It's not a matter of just getting the lights operational. It's all the wiring from panel box to panel box and lights to lights. But we are constantly seeking ways to make that a playable, usable area.
Thank you for all the work.
Happy to do it.
As it says, carry on, my faithful servant.
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you.
I think we all want it to happen right now. And I do, I do want to brag on our folks for what we've already gotten that we didn't think we might have. And so I know they'll continue to work very hard to get it pushed out as quickly as regulators, for lack of a better word, approve. So the next item on the agenda is really an update. We have had a good bit of discussion in the community about student transfers or what we call pupil reassignment from one location to another. And we were asked to maybe bring policy considerations back to the board. We did talk to the policy committee. I know Trevor spent a good bit of time with the North Carolina High School Ath-. We did talk to the policy committee. I know Trevor spent a good bit of time with the North Carolina High School Ath- excuse me, North Carolina School Boards Association, talked about that. So we really have three things we'd like to present and then facilitate your discussion about those. The first thing is just an overview of what we have done for quite some time because I think a lot of people don't really understand that. They know that we've done pupil reassignment and they know who has been involved, but they don't really know all the policy and procedure things. And so Jill will start by doing that. Trevor has talked with the State School Boards Association and the policy committee and probably many of you individually about, you know, one of the, one or two or whatever of the things that could be done. He will present that option. And then, once you all give us some direction, I know it's a work session and not a time where we vote or anything, but once we have a good feel for what you all are thinking, then I would like to present, to present a procedural change in, in not policy change, but the way we manage the procedure. And I'll tell you a little bit about that at that time. So Jill, you want to go on what we currently do?
So Chairman Francis and members of the board, I'm just going to review School Board Policy 4150, and the policy regarding pupil reassignment, and just a couple of points before I get into it. And I'm sure you all are aware, but pupil reassignments are initiated by parents who desire their students to attend a school. That is not where their domicile, so those initiate with parents. And the policy also states that the superintendent or designee, which is me, in the case of pupil reassignments, shall consider and make a determination based upon the best interest of the child, the orderly and efficient administration of public schools, the proper administration of the school to which the assignment is requested, and the instruction, health, and safety of the pupils that they enroll. So I just wanted to review that with you and kind of give you a framework for the policy 4150. Under that policy, the following reasons are pupil for reassignment. The first one is a work-related hardship, and, you know, basically, that's what it says, a work-related hardship. This makes it easier for parents to pick up, drop off their, their child due to their work location, for example. And one I received this year where parents that owned a business on Main Street and the student needed to ride the bus in the afternoon to that location, that is not where their residence was. So those are, you know, there's a lot of, and I'll get into specific numbers in a minute. The majority of the ones we see are work-related hardships, and that, that really helps our families and is in the best interest of our students because it relieves a burden off the family. Childcare-related hardships, sometimes they're intertwined, but childcare-related hardships, these are primarily for elementary and middle school, and they pertain to, you know, transportation either before or after school. For example, a child attends an after-school program at a local church, and therefore they need bus transportation to that church in the afternoon, so they would need to go to that school. Maybe that they've got a younger sibling in the pre-K at that school, and they run the gamut of a lot of, you know, different situations. And we also, in the past, employees are allowed, our employees, Haywood County Schools employees, are allowed to take their child to the school in which they work. And that was in my situation, you know, when I was the principal at Bethel Elementary, I had a hard decision to make because I live in Lake Juneauaska, but, you know, I was driving, at that time it was only 12 minutes, but it's a lot longer than that now to get to Bethel. So that policy allowed me to take my daughter with me and, and really helped our family out. The last one is a situation that is unique to the best interest of the child. And, you know, these, these really are unique situations, and I could detail every one of them out for you, but I'll give you, you know, just an example, like a foster care placement that would allow a child to stay in a school that they're familiar with. Maybe they've moved in with a foster family. And I'll give you some more of those in a minute, but those are situations that are unique. The following are reasons that are not approved under the policy 4150. Personal preference, I like this school better than that school. School rules, I don't like the way that principal runs that school would be an example. Personality conflicts, all the, you know, y'all, I think y'all understand those. Discipline decisions, sports, and classes or courses that are offered at a school. Those are not reasons that are approved under policy 4150. So that's just a review of the bulk, you know, of the policy. How that process actually works is the parent starts by completing the form that's found on our website for reassignment, and then they take it to the student's current principal. And the current principal looks at the form, they usually call the parent back if they need to, or they may call a couple of, if there's a situation they need to verify, they'll do that. And, you know, just ask clarifying questions about the situation if they need to, if they hadn't had the opportunity to meet with a parent when they bring it in. And then they either check that they release the student, or our current form says they release with reservation, okay? At this point, that principal scans it, emails it over to the, the school where the child wants to go. And, or where the parent wants their child to attend. That principal reviews the request, most of the time they call the other principal, they have a conversation about it, and then they may call the parents for clarifying information. And at this point, the principal either approves on their end or they deny on their end. And either way, it comes to our office, and I process those. And at that point, you know, they've both rendered a decision and it comes to us for final review. So if reassignment is approved or denied, you know, parents are notified. Denials also result in a certified letter that are sent to the parents detailing the appeal process to you, which is the board, if they would like to appeal. So just looking at last year, and the, the couple of years before that were a little uncommon because of COVID. There were a lot less pupil reassignments. Last year, there were 195 pupil reassignments submitted. 94 of these were work-related. 54 of these were childcare-related. 47 were unique circumstances that affected the individual child, and I'm going to detail those for you. Of those 47, 27 of them, over half of them, were a continuation of a school track. For example, you live in the Lake Juneauaska District, your child is in third grade. All, you know, you have another kid, all of a sudden that baby's going to start kindergarten. You don't want to pull your, you've moved. You're in the Hazelwood District now, but your child's still in third grade at Juneauaska. You do not want, you want your kindergarten kid to start there, you don't want to uproot your third grade kid. That is the majority, that's 27 of them were just want to stay in the same school with our sibling. And after that, the numbers are much lower. Eight last year were new home builds or moves and transition. We have got, last year I received loans from banks. I have got an American Home Build, that company, the modular company where I've got contracts. They run the gamut of that, not just land purchases. A land purchase does not, a lot of times parents will say, well, land purchase, no. If you've got a contract, that you're getting ready to build, or you're in the process to build, or, you know, you've got a bank loan and it's got to be completed, then, then those are approved. So eight of those were that situation. We had five that were special services related either to the IEPs or our EL students, our English Language Learner students. IEP student placement is related to IEP Individualized Education Plan Team Decisions. And so, for example, at Canton Middle, there are accessibility issues there. And I know Dr. Putnam has spoke to that and were our concerns about that. But our students that have mobility impairment, they, they, those are IEP team decisions. We meet with the parents and let them decide what they think is in the best interest of their child with the facilities that we have. So that was five. There was another English Language Learner who needed services that were provided at a school. So that leaves seven out of the 195. The remaining seven were random situations in regards, you know, again, what was in the best interest of that student. You know, we have a kid, you know, I just don't want to call it individual situations, but a displacement from a house fire where, you know, a family's living in the, let's say, the Reynolds District in Buncombe County now, and they went to school there, and that's not the school they were in, just to protect whoever. And, but, you know, they were at Tuscula and they really want to go back to that school. It's just not working out, allowing that child to come across our, the county line to come back. We have some biological parents who have no contact orders and have siblings still in a building. And don't, you know, the ex, the parent does not want them around that. They're very unique situations. So I hope that helps, that captured those. I also denied seven requests last year by parents. And three of them were due to parents that reported athletic reasons, and my conversations with them, they were denied because they stated athletic reasons. All seven denied requests were offered an appeal to the board through certified mail. None of them chose to appeal to you last year. So what questions do you have for me of the current policy?
I think while you're thinking about questions, I think having done this prior to Jill, and then Dr. Garrett did it prior to me, just a reminder that if it's approved by whatever means we choose, we keep the same process or we do what I'm going to suggest later. If it's approved, there is no automatic appeal to the board. So typically, that process is both the principals look at it, if they're both good with it and think it, think that it's okay, and they've talked to everyone. We look at those when they come to us, we have in the past, but that's typically an approval. If they disagree, one or both of them, then we're looking at it a little bit deeper. But most of them come in unison from the principals. But if, under our current policy, if it's approved, there's not an appeal to the board. The ones that are denied have the right to, to an automatic appeal. I think that context could be important for what, what we decide in the next few days or weeks.
And then looking back over the last three years of data and just looking at, at the end of middle school transfers to the high schools, you know, of course, two years this past year was a little different, but the prior two years are affected by COVID. Those transfers from east to west were within two and three students of each other. This past year, the numbers, and I have the students here, it was three kids, three students different from east to west.
What was the total number going east and total number going west?
Last year, Dr. Rogers? 14 from the east to the west, 17 from west to east.
You happen to have the numbers broke down, elementary, middle, high school?
I have it on a sheet. I hadn't done it though, but I do have it back here. I could do that. I thought it'd be interesting. Most of them are elementary, and most of them are kindergarten. But I'd be glad to, to look at that while we're in closed session or whatever. I've got it all here. I could break that down for you. I, I thought it was interesting too, but the majority of them are, are elementary students, mhm. I'll find out for you for Monday night. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the big concern, I mean, I'm going to just state it, is the fact that one of our high schools seems to be losing some key athletes, and that's what's been, you know, given. I think everybody here's heard that out in the community, and if you haven't, you're lucky. But anyway, I think that's the concern, and what can we do to try to discourage that or, or change the policy to, you know, help curtail some changes just due to, you know, athletic abilities leaving one school, going to another. And I think, you know, and if you really sit down and talk to you about these, you find that, I know you can't disclose particular names and all that tonight, but I've told a lot of people that it's, most of the time it's in the best interest of the child. It may not be the best interest of the parent so much, but, you know, when they get to that age, I think you have to respect what the, the child's wishes may be to a certain degree and why that would affect some kids. And there are special circumstances in this thing, and I understand that. I just wanted to point that out, that it's not a random process. There's a, a good process in our current policy, but I like this discussion because it's definitely the buzz out in the community, I can tell you that much.
I, I think that's a great lead in to Dr. Putnam's work with the State School Boards Association on one option, you can think about that. And then certainly there are probably other options, but, you know, the one that has been part of the buzz is, you know, what he's worked on, and so I'll let him share that, or he can share that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just, I want to point out that I am not the creator of policies. You know, I'm charged with managing those and having them go through a policy committee review for this board. But policy I'm very mindful is yours, and you get to create it and, and set it and establish it. So upon prompting, I looked for an alternative policy. I can tell you that of 115 LEAs, 95 of those choose not to have a sanction for any pupil reassignment, okay? I also want to draw an illustration. Policy can get really confusing because one draws off of another and what, what happens in one affects another. 4150 is a policy for pupil reassignment. And in that policy, if a reassignment occurs, the understanding is that the pupil reassignment was for something other than athletics. And so that's why 3620, extracurricular policy, is never enacted. In its current form, if 3620 were enacted, there would be no sanction. But I, I wanted to provide to you a paragraph that could easily be added to our policy 3620 that would be enacted should a pupil reassignment occur. Irregardless of the, the reason for the pupil reassignment, it would be enacted in 3620. And this did come from Jim O'Rourke, who is the North Carolina School Board Association attorney. So anything I'm reading is legal and lawful. Athletic eligibility shall be determined in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations set forth by the State Board of Education, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, this policy, and any regulations established by the superintendent or designee. Generally, under the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's po- transfer policy, after initial entry into ninth grade, a student transferring schools within Haywood County, and they've already customized it to fit us, a student transferring schools within Haywood County, two, a student transferring to a Haywood County school from another school system, three, a student transferring from Haywood County School to a school in a different school system must set out 365 days for athletic participation, unless the transfer is the result of a bona fide change in residence. In addition, for purposes of athletic eligibility, this transfer policy also shall apply to middle school students, grade six through eight, but shall not apply to students who transfer prior to grade six or to foreign exchange students. Students who were previously reassigned to one elementary, middle, and high school attendance area, i.e. a designated high school track, and continue to be assigned within that same attendance area also are exempt from this transfer policy. So the key tenets here, a student transferring schools within Haywood County, a student transferring to a Haywood County school from a, from a school in a different school system, and a student transferring from Haywood County School to School in a different school system would be the 365-day set-out requirement will be applied unless the transfer is the result of a bona fide change in residence. Now, let me read to you what a bona fide change in residence means under North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules. Any change must be bona fide. Determination of what constitutes a bona fide change of residence depends upon the facts of each case. In order for a change of residence to be considered bona In order for a change of residence to be considered bona fide, at least the following facts must exist. Number one, the original residence must be abandoned as a residence. That is sold, rented, or disposed of as a residence and must not be used as a residence by any member of the family. Two, the entire family must make the change and take with them the household goods and furniture appropriate to the circumstances. Three, the change must be made with the intent that it is permanent. And so that's straight from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. That is their definition of a bona fide move or change in residence. In addition, for purposes of athletic eligibility, this transfer policy will also be applicable to middle school students but shall not apply to students who transfer prior to grade six or to foreign exchange students. Occasionally we get foreign exchange students. So I won't, so I told you how 4150 and 3620 interact. I just want to reiterate that. 4150 operates that any pupil reassignment that occurs within its governance did not involve athletics. So 3620 would never be impacted. However, with this language, it references back to, this language that I, I just read to you that could be placed in 3620, it would reference back to 4150 and that same language would be reflected in 4150. And so in 4150, you might have questions about, what about Jill's example of employees? In 4150, the following paragraph is in there and would be modified in that policy. Students of Haywood County school employees, a student whose parent or guardian is a benefits eligible employee of the Haywood County schools may be assigned to the school where the student's parent or guardian is employed. There's some pretty powerful language in that. I want to point out to you, benefits eligible employee. That does not apply to volunteer coaches. That does not apply to coaches who are only coaches or paid coaches because they are not eligible for benefits such as insurance and retirement and what have you. So it would not apply to, to those types of coaches who their children might accompany. It is only benefits eligible employees in policy 4150.
Interrupt you just a minute on that and that's kind of a clarification. That has been brought up several times because our employees are very valuable to us. And that was the, some of the comments I heard. Well, employees, they can go where they want to go. Their kids can do this and that and the other. But like you say, when they're on that track, we gotta take care of our employees. That's, that's a special benefit for employees. That's, that's a, just a thing that yes, especially if you're, got a young, young family, a young teacher and she's got kids in elementary school and she's on this end of the county and she lives on the other end of the county, west and east. That's, that's tough for a family. And that's why this part right there, to put that in there that yeah, we need to protect our employees and take care of employees. And I don't think it's any, a lot of other companies, I think that they would do that too. They try to take care of their employees as valuable as employees are nowadays, not just in school system, but in every other jobs and careers and stuff. There's, gotta help take care of your kids. A lot of big factories and stuff, they've got daycare for their kids and they've, that's something I really feel like that we definitely need to make sure that we do take care of our employees in this. And, and it's been a, it's been a tough thing. I'm, I'm like everybody else. We've all had the phone calls. We've all had the questions and.
I think that language is an anti-recruitment language was the intent of it. In other words, if, if I've got a son that's a great athlete, you can't hire me as a coach, a volunteer coach in order to get my son to play ball for you.
Right.
I think that's what the, the intent of that language is.
Yes, sir.
That's what I feel like, yeah.
I like what Jimmy said. I mean, every job has its perk and that's a perk of being a Haywood County school benefited employee. You know, picking on Chick-fil-A or something for a minute, their employees get discounted meals and they get break times and blah, 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 and may go beyond that. So that's a perk of their job. So I especially like that too.
What happens in the situation, and I, I agree, you know, I, I think we have the best employees, you know, around and I want to, to give them every option that we can. But in situations where it wasn't a hardship for that teacher until they get to high school or a, a place where they are playing and all of a sudden now, now it's a hardship and they're moving that child at that point in time. You know, they grew up in one district and now all of a sudden, because, because they're an employee, they're gonna move.
Once they get to.
Once they get to a, a certain point in time because that.
Go first.
I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just throwing that situation out.
And I think this is a great opportunity to, to answer that. It's, it's not just a hardship. It's a pupil reassignment. So we didn't, we don't have specific parameters on that right now. If a, if an employee decides that they want to take their kid because they moved jobs somewhere else, we don't have something that says, once you go there, that's it. You can't go anywhere else. We've never, we don't have that in place. So that would be their option to change that school if they changed or if they changed their mind. Basically it's a reassignment. There, there's no, you know, because the employee works there, then they can continue to take their kid there.
Even an employee should apply for that reassignment as well.
And they do. And they have. They have to.
They have to apply for that too.
They have to apply at transition. I apply.
And whether it, yes.
Yes, sir.
I've got to say one word, just really muddy it up. When would this be effective or could you make it retroactive? What would happen on that situation? I mean, I'm just devil's advocate cause I mean, there's, it'll be rough. I mean.
I think we'd have to talk to our attorneys, your attorney, Mr. Smathers, and we could get a second opinion on the admin side from the folks that we use about retroactive. I think you make it effective when you, when you choose if you picked this connection to the extracurricular activity.
I've never known a, a policy to go back in time either.
Not policies. Again, I don't want to speak for Pat or any other attorney. I think you get their advice on that. And certainly if I were recommending when you made it effective, you know, you usually do a couple things when you're, when you're implementing a new policy. You usually say it starts with this school year or you say it starts immediately. And I think those are your options, you know, and again, we might need to talk to Pat or Campbell Shatley on the admin side for a second opinion about, you know, what happens when we change a policy like that in the middle of the year as opposed to the beginning? And I don't, I don't want to speak for what their answer might be.
I mean, that'd be, that'd be pretty ugly.
Well, here's the thing, at least the way I see it. There is either a real bona fide need to transfer or not. If there is a real bona fide need to transfer, having a 365 sit out is purely punishment to the child. To nobody else, just to the child. That, that doesn't relieve the need nor help the situation. So I, I think what we're boiling down to is, how do you determine a real bona fide need for pupil reassignment outside of athletics? I don't think athletics is a bona fide need. But there will be athletes with a bona fide need to transfer. So you can't, you can't punish this athlete, but not this one. It's got to be, you gotta take the athletics out because that's not why you're making the decision. Is there a need that benefits that student? If there is, then I don't how you not grant a transfer. I mean, we're, we're running the school system, not a prison system.
Yeah, I, I, I can give you some examples of what I did for, you know, about 13 years. And I know Dr. Garrett considered things like this before I did it and Jill's done it the last four years. But they're typically third party documentation things. We find out about law enforcement action that involves the student that makes it better for that student to be in a different school. Or we, or we hear even about documented mental health situation where we get in writing that this, this student doesn't need to be at that school. And if they do, there are going to be problems because of their interaction with another student. They've had a domestic dispute off campus and they sought therapy or there's some other condition like that. Yeah, yeah, we get the note from the doctor or the provider or law enforcement. Sometimes. Recommending a school placement. Yeah, we don't, like Jill started.
That's just, that just goes to the bona fide transfer. That's what I'm saying. There has to be some, some kind of documentation that from a professional third party that helps in the decision making or justifies the decision making.
And sometimes, you know, Jill started off and Trevor may have mentioned this too, talking about the parent sends us the request. We don't know it's coming unless we hear, you know, rumor mill in the community, but we don't know it's coming until it arrives at the first principal and then at the second principal. And then, you know, sometimes when the principal is talking to those folks or when we have talked to them or someone has talked to them, we, we get that thing because we're telling them, you know, we're having conversations with them and we're going, I don't see anything in the policy. I appreciate you asking for a request, but the policy is childcare. The policy is a work-related hardship or something unique that relates only to you. And a lot of times they'll tell us, tell us stuff and we'll go, well, that relates to 2,000 students. Can't, can't really use that, you know? And so sometimes just the conversations with them give you that thing. And then you go, okay, bring us, you know, bring us the documentation from law enforcement or bring us the documentation from the medical provider and we'll look at it.
Well, I, I think you've got, that helps it be a little more, that helps it be cut and dry. Now, can I throw out just a theoretical?
Sure.
If you've got a 6'4", 275 pound defensive tackle, it's a division one prospect that wants to transfer from one high school to another because he's being bullied.
That's not one of the reasons on our current form.
You gotta be thinking about, is this doctor's note real?
Well, and, and you know, bullying or discipline in general is not one of the things we consider because we say to families, we need to get that fixed at the school site. Or you don't need to be jawing back at the person you say is bullying you because you're contributing to it. So we have denied a bunch of those. And you know, my, and I can remember denying a very high profile athlete about eight years ago and it was just an athletic request. And that's easier, I think, to take, take some grief over than a, a situation where people are mad at you and you're just trying to do what's in the best interest of the child. And you think you're, you know, you really believe, you don't think it, but you really think and believe that you're following the policy and getting that documentation.
And doing what's in the best interest of kids. I heard Trevor say this today. It's not easy. And you know, I hear what you say about that bullying and then you get one, I've not had a defensive one, D1 tackle except this one sitting here. But, but you get one that it's risen to the level of whatever, let's say the bullying is causing mental health issues and a therapist is recommended, they need to, they need to leave. It's, it's never, those are the easy ones if it's just bullying. You know, it gets, it can get very complicated when those documentation pieces come in too. Or more straightforward. But it's like Mr. Francis said, I mean, we've done this a long time and we get, you know, discipline issues. Parents always want to know, you know, what happened? You gotta tell me. What'd you do? And it's hard. I mean, you want to be able to tell people and you can't. And you just gotta know, I think we've done it all a long time and, you know, just try to be as fair as we could and treat these students as if they were our own kids.
Well, obviously it looks, it looks to me like about 15% of the transfers are athletes. And probably that's where the heartburn is. And the 365 penalty for sitting out basically a year is to discourage people from doing that if they're an athlete. The, the non-athletes, it don't seem to be an issue to anybody.
It's not.
So I guess the thing, the determination everybody's got to decide is, are you willing to put that in? And if you are, then, then it's up to the parents and that child to decide if it's, if it's enough, if it's important enough for them to sit out for a year or not. So I don't know. I mean, it's a hard decision.
Well, it's either that or they transfer out of county or to a private school.
Or move, yeah. Or private school, that's what happens.
Or they just pick up and move.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's a tricky situation, period. I mean, it's just tricky. I, I think that continued, is the way I'll say it, continued relies upon bona fide issues with documentation is, is essential. I don't, I don't think we ever want to err on, or not err on the side of the, of the child.
So you don't have to make a decision tonight. It's a work session, but just, we, we need to have the discussion. And I do have a procedural thing I want to share with you if, if that's okay and not trying to stop this part of the discussion. But you know, essentially, do you add this sanction in a related policy? I don't think we need to make a lot of changes to the current policy, but do you add this sanction or not? But when we're, when you are through talking about the options here or asking us questions about the option here, I do want to talk about a procedural, suggested procedural change either way you go and, and try to explain why I think that would be important. This is somewhat legal advice, but it's really just sort of looking at it because I'm not sitting up there where y'all are sitting. Okay? You know, the, the, the policy on, on moving, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. That, that's really not your issue. I mean, if someone moves, they're gonna move and then they can go and, and then you can determine whether it's a bona fide transfer. I think the issue is the 4150 policy. I mean, in truth, my observation is that's a pretty good policy. Okay? Because you've got a basis for kids to move who may need to move because of the purposes that are there. But what appears to be the tail wagging the dog is the athletics. Are we going to change a policy and affecting all the other students because of athletics? I mean, it's, Dr. Rogers comments very right. There, there are kids who go and transfer and they're gonna be good athletes. There are also gonna be kids transferring and they're gonna be the best tuba player in the county. One may be the commander of the ROTC program. One may end up being the, get the best scholarship at all for round. I mean, I, I, I think right now for some reason, we're just sort of in a period where the tail's wagging the dog. I mean, this is not something that has been going on for, yeah, there's been transfers. And, but I mean, it's just all of a sudden here in the last couple of years, this has been a big issue. I've been school board lawyer for 35 years. I haven't seen this being addressed that much. So I just would not let the tail wag the dog.
So, I just would not let the tail wag the dog. I mean, the policy is pretty good, but, but you can't, you can't, I mean, the, the, the 36...
3620.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that may ought to be a doc, because that's just, that's just common sense, practical. I mean, nobody's gonna move. And I don't doubt that people have said in the past, "Well, I'm, I'm renting down in, in such and such place, and that's my residence," and they've gamed it. There's not anything you really can't game, in a lot of ways. I mean, it's happened, okay? But your policy, I think, is pretty good, you just gotta enforce it. But I don't think you, to me, it just seems like, like, why is this, I mean, I understand why it's an issue, okay? But it's, it, it, it does appear to be the tail wagging the dog. And if you, if you, because I think the policy's pretty good. I mean, it's, it's what we've had for years. And I think you, if you, if you start addressing too many things in that, it's gonna start getting gamed on the other way. And you're gonna affect kids who literally are a foster child, who, let's just face society, what society is, there's a lot of people not living, a lot of kids not living with their parents. They're living with grandmama, they're living with boyfriend's parents, they're living with, with, with cousins, and so forth. And are we going to say that, for whatever reasons, you can't play sports? Because that's one of the good things about this county, I think, is we do, we do emphasize the importance of sports, and how that can be in the, in the, in the whole child. So, that's my comments, just from being here for 35 years, okay? I don't know if this will go away next year, or go away two years, but, I mean, I hope we don't just let the tail wag the, the dog here.
Pat, I, I think that, I maybe shouldn't say this, but I'm going to anyway, Joe.
You want me to reel in, you asked me if I...
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
The, the, it's an inside joke. The, in the community, what you may hear is a reason for a transfer. May not be the reason for the transfer. There's a good chance, if it's been granted, that there's document, a documented need that goes along with that. And I think this discussion has been good, just to make people aware of that. You know, what we hear, and what might be the truth, are, could be a great distance apart.
Mr. Rogers is exactly right, and people will never know, okay?
We shouldn't tell.
They don't know, they will never know. They will see, they will see the guy that hits the home run, and they'll read about that. That's public information. And they're gonna say, "Well, that's why he went from this school, from west to east, or east to west." They'll never know, and should never know, what the real reason that they went there. It may be a child who is having one heck of a time at home, okay? And they can't be there, okay? And, and, and they move. Is it a perfect system? People game it? Sure, they can game it, you know? But you just want to keep it to a, to a, to a minimal. But I've just, I, and I understand everybody, I mean, right now, it is, I mean, I have said this before, I admire anyone, and all of y'all who run for public office on a local level, because you're gonna get harangued, you're gonna get fussed at, everybody says they're gonna know everything. Y'all know more than you know, okay? Or I should say, they, they think they know more than you know. Some things in the public school system, they can't know, and will never know. And you just have to rest with that assurance, that, that you do the best you can. But it's, um...
Well, and regardless of what the rumors are, we are bound to honor people's privacy, and we're not gonna talk about it.
Confidentiality, we have to. I think you just have to enforce your policy as best you can enforce the policy, and, you know, for what I, I wouldn't do a whole lot of changing. Just say, "Look, you know, y'all, y'all will understand." Because probably next year, it's gonna be another issue.
I'd like to say one thing to Dr. Rogers, to that point, too. And I just asked Trevor, and one thing I've seen, is there, we have a lot of private schools that are recruiting our kids, okay? And I asked Trevor, when, you know, did anybody come to his high school and recruit him as a, you know, starter at Clemson for four years? He said, "No." But now, those kids are getting recruited heavily in our school system, and that's been different, too. And that was not the way it was in the past. Parents have a lot more options. In 1985, let's see, Dr. Rogers, you graduated in 83. You were a great football player. Did you have private schools coming and recruiting you? You know, I mean, you would now. And, and I think that's different. Parents have to make really hard decisions, and it's tough when you've got somebody telling you, "If you go here, your kid's gonna get more exposure," or they promise you this and that. And I think those are such individual family decisions, you know, that are hard. But those, those things didn't happen, even maybe 10 years ago, you know? So, anyway, I just, I think that's part of it, too.
A lot of it is, is the private, private recruitment, which is, you can't do anything about that. Another thing is this, you know, there's one thing you can do, you can control within the district. If your coaches are doing this, the administration can take care of that, and it may need to be, "Look, we, we're having a problem with the perception that schools are recruiting other athletes." They all have to help us get the truth out, and end that perception. So, don't be recruiting, don't even try, you know, you need to, and...
You know what discourages me, Pat? Would you have played for Tuscola, or Waynesville?
No, 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 and I...
Same, same right here, pal.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have gone down to Pesca to play.
It's, you know, I'm going back... Going back 50 years.
No offense, but you know what I'm saying.
It's different times. 50 years, I'm going back 50 years.
I'm just a loyal person, and I'm gonna be loyal to the Big T.
I, I would, I would never have gone to Tuscola to play sports, and I would have been highly suspect of anybody from Tuscola coming to Pesca.
That's right.
That's just the way it was at that point in time. And we have to accept that. It's different, but...
Well, I'd like, you know, I'll wrap it up with one story. I know that, you know, it's tough being on this board, and you have inside information. You do. And keeping that confidence was our task. And I'll tell you a story, you, Jimmy and I were on the board at the time. It's been a long time ago, and I'm not going to say who it was, but I had a pastor come and really rake me over the coals for several months about an action on one of his people that in this church. And, you know, you just have to bite your tongue. And, you know, it was about eight or 10 years later, that same pastor called me and said, "You were right, and I apologize." So, you, you do what's right.
What's right.
For the child, and for the school system, and need to police any rumors of recruiting within our system, and take action when we can have a bona fide, not an alleged case, it's actually happening, we need to address that, so. It's all good, a good discussion.
And I was talking about private school recruiting, not...
Oh, I know, I know. But, but the rumor is out there that there's...
There that we're having it, too, within our...
Within our district, we're having rumors of that as well. And it might be true, I don't know.
Mr. Francis, just for clarity, because we're, would you please confirm that I was not that pastor that harangued?
It was not Dr. Rogers.
I do have one clarification, if I can ask it. This is for what Trevor, you said there's 94 districts that do not have any kind of set-out penalty.
Ninety-five.
So, out of all the 115 school districts...
Twenty do.
Twenty, only 20 have a set-out 365 penalty.
Yep.
And they're, they're varying sanctions.
Well, that, that was my second question. Can, can, can we do something other than the 365? Because I'll be honest, most, what we're hearing, people really don't, are not that upset with when one team goes out of county and plays a different team in another county. It's, it's mainly the inter-county situations that we're seeing the big, you know, controversy over, and the animosity in those particular games, and the Facebook posts and all that stuff. Would there be any way we could, you know, create our own...
Customize it.
Customize it, where if you transfer from one side of the county to the other side, you can't play in that inter-county game for 365? Just to take some of that animosity out of, you know, people back and forth? I mean, I know that, but that's, that's where we're hearing the majority of the complaints. You know, it's not when, when one of the teams is playing some, you know, Inca, or Silver, or Smoky Mountain, or something like that. Is there ways that we could do something to that effect?
Yes, the sanction, as I was sharing, and I, I was away from the mic, so I'll just restate. Sanctions can range up and down. Obviously, 365 is the, one of the harsher penalties. Certainly, a rivalry game could be excluded as a sanction. You could look at a semester sanctioned, and anywhere in between. What I would recommend is, if that, you know, arrive at what you think a sanction should be, and we just want the school board attorney, and maybe Mr. Smathers, to review it prior to putting it up for a first read. I can tell you how we landed at 365. The court, policy committee, which Mr. Rogers serves on, had lengthy discussion. And, you know, policies is like a really good fence. And you, you have to give the dimensions of the fence, what it's made of, where does it start? Where does it end? How tall is it? What's its consistency? And so, that's what policy is. It prescribes what is possible and what is not. And the, the thing that we, as we got into it, is we felt like people would game the policy, short of 365. I'm a football player, and I don't, I don't want to miss my rivalry game, so I'll go ahead and play my, my fall season. But then I can roll right into spring, and I don't care if I miss that rivalry game in baseball, because I'm not that big a baseball player. So, there are ways to game it. And I'm certainly, again, as I pointed out, I'm happy to provide any type of alteration to the policy that's legal and lawful, and I can bring it back to you in that way, and have Mr. O'Rourke with the North Carolina School Board Association, and, and Pat, take a look at it.
Let me ask you a question, though. Because if, if the transfer is approved for a bona fide reason, or it's not, right? There's either a real reason for the transfer, or there's not a transfer. So, we're not gonna transfer somebody for an athletic reason, and then say, "Sit, sit out in 365." We're just not gonna transfer them. So, you see what I'm saying? It's either we're doing it for a valid, authentic reason, or not.
I, I, I agree. I mean, I, again, like I said, because it is difficult, and, and, but one of the things that's such, puts pressure on is now you have so much social media, and people who get on, and their perception is that, well, your perception is, well, so-and-so's doing this, so they can go play football down there, baseball, or basketball, or whatever. And they have no idea, as we talked about, they're not gonna, I'll end with this statement. I've said, I think I may have told some of all of y'all this. I love the statement that's even, that's been credited to either Mark Twain or Winston Churchill. And I think that's what the social media and internet has shown. And the statement was, you know, "A lie will get halfway around the world before the truth gets its pants on." And so, and that's the world we're living in. And that's what, and, and so, you, you hear all this stuff, and, and that's the way it is. And that's why you just have to just rest and assured in your decision at the time that you make it.
Well, let me just say this one other thing, and then about that. You know, we are looking out for the best interest of the child. That's the bottom line. That's number one. And if that child is getting harassed, or bullied by moving over and playing in those inter-county games from, you know, kids that they used to go to school with, and parents getting involved, that, I mean, so I'm sort of looking at it from the, from the perspective of, you know, it could also benefit the child to maybe miss that one game, and not miss the rest of the season, or cause them to be, you know, lose out on scholarships or anything. So, it, you know, that's sort of where I'm also, you know, looking at that possibility of that county rivalry, because that seems to be the, the biggest problem right now.
I don't know if it's only that. I, I think there's another piece to it, that, and this is where, this has been where my struggles been through all of this, is growing up, from a time I was six years old until I quit playing football, I had a football in my hand. Well, guess what? I was on the same team with those same kids. And if one of those moved away, it hurt the team they left. So, there's, there's that piece that I, I can't reconcile in my mind, that just that, that, that team camaraderie that's broken. And I think that's what causes a lot of the backlash that we see, is, man, they're... And, and this is a perception, it isn't reality, but this is the perception. Man, they, they got one of our good ones. What are we gonna do now? So, you're sitting there with, "What are we gonna do now?" And, sorry about that. That's the hard, that's the hardest part of this whole thing for me to reconcile.
Dr. Rogers, one thing I've observed, too, just over the last, that I notice is a difference, is all the travel teams now. These kids play with each other from both ends of the county, from surrounding counties. They're all great friends, they all play together all the time, and it's not just school ball like it used to be. I mean, you know, I think they, they know each other, they travel together. I, I see that as a big difference, too. That wasn't when, when we were growing up. Not that we're old or anything.
Traveling teams back then, though, too, you were a traveling team, but you were on that end, or you were on that end.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't play together.
You didn't have people from every end of the county, or all over, like I say, different counties joining in on that traveling team, so.
Uh, it's changed. It's changed. Mr. Francis, I had Dr. Putnam give you all a procedural change. I don't know if you want me to go through this tonight. I do want to share this with you at some point, because I think this might be beneficial in a number of ways. I don't know if you want me to do that now, or if you want me to do that at a later time when you all come closer to a decision. I'm good, either way.
We'll go ahead and do it?
It don't matter to me.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Let's go ahead.
So, what, essentially, what the, the policy refers to in general is that the superintendent will establish procedures for carrying out the policy. And so, many years ago, when Dr. Garrett was here, I did what Jill was doing in process, the pupil reassignments, and we created a form, and she read a bunch of the things on the form a while ago. You get to move for these reasons, you can't move for these reasons. Parent, parent initiated, two principal signatures on it, and a central office signature. That form's sort of antiquated, society has changed. And this form is something we've worked on over the last week or so, and it consolidates some of the things that we do. In my mind, there are three changes here in process. So, one of the first cha, all the stuff up top is really what we already do. We look at it when students go from 5th grade to 6th grade, and from 8th grade to 9th grade, and have them sort of re-up, if they've been at that elementary school or middle school, and talk to them about staying, whether they want to stay in the same track or not. And we ask them where they are, and, and where they want to go. But we actually have three different things that we do that we think it would be convenient to put on one form, okay? So, thus, those three boxes there, okay? So, the first box is released from a Haywood County school for admission in another Haywood County school. That's what we've been talking about mainly all night. And that's the predominant one out of, that's the 195 or so that we dealt with that Jill talked about last year. There are other students that fall into these other boxes that we also do, that we might want to put on the same form. want to put on the same form. The second one is a release from Haywood County schools to another school system. We do that all the time. Some school systems have a form letter sent from the superintendent. Some school systems let the principal release, okay? But we just put that second thing on there. There are three things that we do. And then in C, uh, is admission to Haywood County schools from another school system, okay? We have someone who works in Buncombe County and they teach at fill-in-the-blank school and their child, um, wants, needs to come or wants to come because of their age or childcare or whatever. And they, um, they want to come here, but they live somewhere else. They usually work here, we require them to work here or have some kind of bona fide reason. So we thought we'd just put all of that on the same form, just, um, economy of scale. The next boxes under those three big boxes are things that we typically ask people or find out during the process. Where do you work? Um, are you employed with the school system? What's your childcare location? We have literally, when someone claimed a childcare location, gotten out the Google Maps or some other maps program on the computer, put their home in and, and looked and see how far the mileage was or the travel time was between their assigned school and the one they were requesting. I mean, literally that kind of stuff. So we, we've asked them, where do you live? You know, that kind of stuff. Um, are you an employee? And then is there a unique situation? This is all related to our current form. We find out, what is that? Can you give us the documentation for that? So none of that's new. And then step three is you're moving from fifth grade to sixth grade. Do you want to stay in your current path or do you want to go where you currently reside? Uh, if they want to go where they currently reside, all they really have to do is go to that school and show their driver's license and sort of prove that that's where they live. If they want to stay, then they go through this process. Uh, and then we get some basic information on the student and the parent, you know, where the student's living, where the parent's living. Sometimes that's the same, sometimes it's not. And then we get a phone number for a parent. And then this statement is a little different than what we have on the next form, but we basically, um, get their signature of assurance and knowledge that they know that, um, what the policy is and the reasons that they can change and the reasons that they can't. Under that box that I just described, we added student athlete because we knew that that, as Mr. Francis, Chairman Francis said earlier, we know that's the thing, that's the buzz right now. And that's something that we need to be aware of upfront and get them to tell us that rather than us finding out after they've given us all the other reasons. Uh, I don't know that you would consider it unless you put something in the, um, policy that's listed there, 3620, or did something else with student athletes. And then the, the third thing that's different, the, the differences are the three, the three boxes, uh, combining everything on the form, asking if they're an athlete. And then the thing that's different at the bottom is there's just the principal signature from the, from the releasing and receiving school. Right now, and other systems do that, and, and right now it comes to the central office. The reason for doing that is, and again, I'm just going to say something like Chairman Francis did earlier, part of the buzz out there is that me and Dr. Putnam and Jill are helping one school get athletes and, um, not another school. And I don't know that when people get upset in the future, that they won't continue to use that excuse. Um, we certainly have not done that. You know, we've, we've all worked on both ends of the county. We've tried to be very, very fair. But one of the things we could do is what other schools, some other school systems do, is let the principals do that and not be part of that process. That eliminates one of the false and inaccurate excuses. So again, not something you all need to, uh, tell us if that's okay or not. That's something you can think about. But it's been, again, I'm just being plain here and I know this is not live stream, but people could get it later and listen to it. Some of it's been pretty ugly. You know, I've been, I, I have seen, um, social media posts and texts that says that I'm lying about pupil reassignments or that I'm inept. And the author of that said, I really don't think he's inept. So maybe that was a backhanded compliment. But I do think, you know, people, um, use us as an excuse sometimes and we've just all three worked really hard. Uh, Trevor's never done this job, but we all three have worked very hard to help every school that we can. Uh, sometimes we get accused of that too. Y'all are helping us too much. And I promise you, we only help them when we get, you know, an appeal from a parent or something like that.
Grievance process would be basically the same.
Grievance process would be the same. And you know, Mr., several of you have been on the board for a while. You know, in the last 15 years, you've probably had three.
If that many.
If that many. You might have more because society has changed. I think you all pretty articulately, as a group, board members and other people here talked about how society has changed. But basically it's the, appeal process is very similar for pupil reassignments that are denied, not the ones that are approved, and for disciplinary, uh, appeals to the board for long-term suspension. And you know, we don't do many of those either. I think we've done one in the last four or five years. But basically what happens is the parent says, I don't agree with the denial of the pupil reassignment and I want to appeal it to the board or a panel of the board. They write that in a letter to the superintendent and then the superintendent lets Pat know and the board chair know, and you do that. So that's just something we would hope that you would consider.
Can I say one more thing?
You can't, you can't say anything. No, go ahead.
No, we all, um, our current form has a releasing principal too and receiving principal on it.
Oh, yeah.
Also, and I will tell you that, you know, um, 99% of them, both principals agree. So on the ones that I have right now.
So just food for thought. Um, again, we can, you can ask us questions about that later. And I don't think you have to decide on this in any hurry. You might wait to see what you do with the other options before you.
Very good.
Okay. I think the last thing I would say is if you knew, if you used this form or one like it and you knew it was a student athlete, you could even have like a panel or something look at it. I don't know if you would want to do that, but you could.
Just a quick clarification. Is it policy 4150 student reassignment or 4130?
Uh, I think, I think it's 4150.
Cause on this has 4130.
Okay. We'll, we'll fix that.
Okay. That's just a clarification.
Yeah. It's a draft.
It's a draft.
Dr. Rogers catch that?
Dr. Rogers caught it.
He's good at that.
I'll give him credit for it.
We'll, we'll double check that. And again, we might not even use this, but that's something that we would-
Something to consider.
Hope you would consider.
You dang it.
I have a legal question on it. Can we just single out student athletes? With this question, student athletes?
I guess he's saying, can we ask them if they're a student athlete?
Can we single them out versus other extracurricular activities?
I, I don't know. We'd have to get Pat to tell us that.
I think you can, because that's one of the reasons you can't transfer if it's just a student athlete.
I got you.
Okay. All right. Makes sense. This, this conversation, but I, I just want to make one editorial comment. You know, y'all are getting beat up and the administration's getting beat up, but it's more than just a silver lining that this issue is here. Cause to me, in this school system, it shows people care. I mean, look, these people who are complaining, it's not necessarily their kid, it's their community.
Right.
Okay? And when we lose our sense of community, then we got some serious problems. So, I mean, this ruckus that's taking place is because the people on the west end have, or have a sense of community about their school and it's their community. People on the east end have their community. It's our community. You know, western North Carolina is still a place where it's, our communities, our boys are going to cross the mountain and play, your boys are going to beat your boys. And now it's our women are going to cross the mountain and beat your women with, with Title IX. I mean, it's a sense of community. This is, all things because, and to me, that says more about the strength of our county than anything else, cause the people care.
Yep.
What if they didn't care? They said, well, I don't care.
Good point.
My team loses. I don't care if my school's doing well. I don't care if, if our kids aren't getting educated. I mean, we got to deal with the misperceptions and the miscommunication and the, that, but that, it's a, I would just hope that the people in the county would see this, yeah, it's bad, but I think it's bad, but you know, here again, it's really a good thing. Cause these two schools will go at it and, uh, we're stronger. Look, we're in the top 10% of the, of the state, okay? It's cause I'm from Tuscola or I'm from Pisgah. I'm not from East Pollock County. I belong to a community, okay? So, let me set for you.
Now I interrupt you, Bobby, I hate to bust your bubble, but yeah, 4130 is the discretionary admissions policy.
Yeah.
150 is a pupil reassignment.
And it, uh, 150 is a pupil reassignment. Um, thank you for finding that, uh, Mr. Rogers. The, um-
Little bit.
4130 discretionary enrollment is people going in and out of the county.
Yeah, okay.
That's those second two boxes.
Okay. Very good.
Well, again, it's clarification.
Well, it's all, um-
It was clarification. We got time to ponder this and, uh, pray over it and seek wisdom. Next, I guess we need a-
Make a motion.
Any other announcements that need to be made before we go into closed session?
No, sir.
Of course, we, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we are having a closed session to discuss personnel or legal issues. Um, this time I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, saying, Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go into closed session.